Good morning Manitoba, I'm Larry McIntosh and I'll be your host for the next hour every Saturday morning from eight to nine. Thank you for tuning in. Peak of the Market is on Twitter, please follow us at Peak of the Market for recipes and Food and Friends guest updates. We have over 225,000 Twitter followers and we'd love to have you follow us too. Again, we're at Peak of the Market or you can follow me at Larry McIntosh. My guest this morning is Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklands and Weston and the Chair of the Winnipeg Police Board. Good morning Scott.
Good morning Larry.
How are you doing?
I'm doing very well. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here.
Well, I think it's great. I mean, we met at a few dinners and I was impressed with you, but you know, I want to tell you, this is show number 254 of Food and Friends. So this fall, we're actually celebrating our fifth anniversary of the show. We've had well over 200 Manitobans on the show and you're the very first City Councilor ever to be on the show.
Well, I'm honoured. Thank you so much. I'm glad to have the opportunity to be the first City Councilor on your show.
Well, we appreciate it. And this show, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk about all the negative things you probably have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And Peak of the Market is actually in your ward, King Edward, right? We have this pothole in front of our building. No, I'm just kidding. But you just got into City Council in the last election. How are you finding, how long has it been now?
It has been just over eight months now that since I was, I and the other councillors and the new mayor were sworn into office.
So how are you finding it?
I've told people, it's the proverbial, you know, you've heard people talking about drinking from the fire hose. It's a bit of that. There is, there's, there's so much to learn. And in many ways, it's a steep learning curve. I'm really enjoying it. Don't get me wrong. There's just, there's a lot to take in. You know, when you come to, from outside into City Hall, you're, you're learning not only to be, I'm not learning not only to be Ward Counselor and all that that entails, like potholes on the streets. But also each one of us has different boards or committees we're sitting on. So we're learning those things. So for me, it's learning about police, policing in Winnipeg and police governance, not only Winnipeg, but across Canada. So you know, that and other boards that I sit on as well. There's, there's all those things to learn. I've told people, it's like, it's a little bit like traveling to a foreign country. There's a bit of culture shock because when you go from outside City Hall to inside City Hall, it's, it's, there's different processes. You know Larry, there's, it's like a different language sometimes, you know? But each, each week, each month that goes by, I get more comfortable.
And there is, obviously we have a new mayor as well and several little new councillors and it has to be, you said it, but a steep learning curve. I mean, you're walking into, you really don't, you can't really know what you're walking into, you actually get there, I would assume.
No, I think that's right there. I mean, you have a sense, you know, you have a sense, but again, until you, I guess, get on the inside and get around those tables and, and, you know, you don't, you don't have a full appreciation. And I know that I certainly don't yet have a full appreciation. But, but you know, you bring up a good point. I mean, around, you know, around the council chamber, there's 16 seats. There's a mayor and 15 councillors. And in this last election, eight of us are new.
Right.
You know, so that's, that's a big, that's a big change for the citizens of Winnipeg as well. But I'm enjoying working, I really am enjoying working with all of my new colleagues and, and enjoy the challenges that are before us. And I really do consider it an absolute privilege to do, have been elected and to serve the, the community, you know, the residents and the business, you know, owners of St. James, Brooklands, Weston Ward.
And next segment, we want to talk a little bit about your background, but I want to talk, talk about your experience in this segment a little bit more. So you walk in on your first day. So you know the things you'd like to accomplish because you obviously ran a campaign, you had some ideas. You know that you're gonna have issues come up every day that you're gonna have to deal with, but you also have what's already there from prior council that you're dealing with, good or bad, right? I mean, you have to deal with those issues as well. It has to be a little bit overwhelming in the first several months. So you've been there eight months now. You've got some things to learn, as you said, but you gotta be getting more comfortable, I guess, eh?
Yeah, I think, I think I am. And you're right, you know, when you say that we inevitably inherit what has been done by those that have gone before us. And that can be really good. There's some really good things obviously that have been done. There's some things that you look at and think, oh, maybe we'd have done that differently. But the reality is, here we are, we've inherited things, you know, whether it's projects that have gone on or, or some policy decisions that have been made earlier. So you work, work within them. You move towards changing what, you know, you think needs to be changed and, and, and it, what I do know is it, it takes longer than, than to, to, you know, to change some things than I'd have hoped. And, and you get an appreciation too, I think, for, seriously Larry, the hard work and the good work that so many of our public servants are doing, you know, in serving, in, in serving the citizens of Winnipeg.
I've, there's Sam Kates, I know quite well, former mayor obviously, and I've asked him some questions that I thought, well, this seems pretty straightforward to me. And he would answer whatever the question was. It's not as straightforward as you would think on the outside sometimes. So you must be finding that you think, okay, well, that's easy to do, but there's nine other issues that are involved in that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. And I think, you know, the general public has an appreciation for that, that they realize, just as you pointed out, that you know, you're kind of on the outside as a citizen looking in. And, and so you realize that, you know, it seems simple, you know, when I was, before I was elected, you know, I knew it'd probably be complicated, some things on the inside and take a little while, but, but I thought, wow, there's gotta be, you know, this must be simple. In some ways, in a few things, and it's, it's just not, you know, but I, I suppose it's similar to probably almost any other organization. People might think that, boy, Larry McIntosh has the easiest job in the world, you know, at Peak of the Market, but probably, you know, once you get into the side, there's, 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 there's a lot more that goes on, you know, at your business or anyone else's business than, than the meets the eye from, from the observer.
And to be honest with you, I have one of the best jobs in the world. I mean, I sell something that's good for you. I get to meet interesting people like you. I even have a radio show Saturday mornings. So it's pretty cool.
It's a pretty good gig, eh?
We're speaking with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklands and Weston, and we'll be right back after this break. Welcome back. I'm Larry McIntosh. Peak of the Market growers have been very busy harvesting. Here's a list of Manitoba grown vegetables that are available right now at your local store. There's broccoli, green and red cabbage, cauliflower, cucumbers, kale, leeks, shallots, green and yellow zucchini, as well as red potatoes. And that's quite a few vegetables that are available right now. Let me quickly go through it again. Broccoli, green and red cabbage, cauliflower, cucumbers, kale, leeks, shallots, green and yellow zucchini, as well as red potatoes. Now, the breaking news, just being harvested this weekend, yellow and green beans, beets, Savoy cabbage, and one of our larger crops, carrots. So they're just being, happening this week. So you'll see them in your store later on this coming week. And every day, there seems to be another Manitoba grown crop being harvested. And please remember, if it says Peak of the Market on the label, it is guaranteed to be grown right here in Manitoba. We're back with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklyn, Weston. So we were talking last segment about you're new to politics, eight months ago, our City Council at least. What was, what were you doing prior to running for City Council?
Prior to running for City Council, I pastored. I pastored for 22 years.
Oh wow.
Yeah, and I really, really enjoyed that. I, I enjoy serving people. I enjoy working with the community to try to, just to try to make things, you know, try to make life better for people. And I, it was a rich, rewarding career and still, you know, who knows? I think probably, maybe someday I'll, I'll go back to this. Quite frankly, I see politics as a, as a temporary thing. I don't know how temporary it'll be, but I don't see it being a forever thing for me. And probably will go back to pastoring.
So that was quite, that's a bit of a step from 22 years, you said?
Yes.
To getting into running for City Council. What made you decide that?
I think I, over the 22 years, I got involved, got very involved in community. So I've set on community boards, like Community Club Boards, the Silver Heights Community Club when it was there. And then we amalgamated with Sturgeon Creek to make the Sturgeon Heights Community Centre and Club. And I was on that board and then St. James and Synoie 55 plus board. And it's just some other local kind of community groups. I was just trying to get in there, like so many of the other great volunteers that are here in Manitoba. Just getting, rolling up my sleeves, getting in there to try to, you know, do my part to serve the community. One thing led to another. And when you're serving on those boards, you meet and you work with a lot of politicians. And it was through some conversations and, you know, that just started to pique my interest. Some of those conversations with some of those politicians started to pique my interest. And one thing led to another and, and here we are.
So one thing led to another. Did you, do you feel that things weren't happening quick enough? Did you feel like you could make a difference? And it's probably, these are vague questions, but what was the inspiring thing that said, you know, I gotta, I gotta run and, and, because I frankly, before you answer that, I got, I think anybody in political life, whether it's city or municipal, obviously, province or the federal, you give up your, bit of your private life and you're gonna take criticism no matter what you do. It's, it's a, it's a big stretch for someone. I admire people that do that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I think that what got me into it was probably just this, two things, the opportunity to serve and then a timing matter with the previous councillor, Scott Fielding, not running again. He and I sat down together and he really, he was one of the ones, or a few people, he was one of the ones to encourage me to really consider it. And so the opportunity was there and, and I did run. And I think the 22 years of, of pastoring is, is interesting in, in that you really, as a family, we knew that. That meant that I was serving the congregation. And so my time was not always my own. And so I was out, you know, evenings often, or I was out on a Saturday or tied up on weekends. And, and so my family kind of had this, already this idea. It's, it's a form of, pastoring is a form of public service Larry, in a sense. It's not, not dissimilar. And so my family had, was a little bit used to that already. And so the leap into politics, while it's very different, there's some things that, that are not so different.
So eight months into it, your wife, Marla, right?
Marla, yes.
Marla, what's she say now?
She's, you know, she's, she's enjoying, we're enjoying it. And part of the reason we're enjoying it is that after 22 years of being in the church, every weekend, kind of, you know, we do get weekends together, which is, which is kind of nice. But, but my family's been fantastic. You know, our, our daughter Hannah and our son Andrew and Marla have been really fantastic as far as being supportive. And my extended family, my parents and friends as well. And I think it would be, well, for me, it would be impossible to do this without, without my family's support.
I would a hundred percent agree because it doesn't, it's just not you going to work every day. I'm sure you get the odd phone call at home. You're working in the evenings and I'm sure some weekends to go to various events. It definitely has to have the support of your family, I would think.
Yeah. And we talked about it too, is that it's public life. And so, you know, there's a media element to it as well. And so sometimes I'll get it right and, you know, and the media will point that out. And sometimes I won't get it right, Larry, and the media will probably point that out as well. And so we've even talked about that, about just kind of taking everything with a grain of salt, so.
And as I said, I appreciate people like yourself who put yourself forward to serve the public. So good for you. We're speaking with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklands, Weston, and we'll be right back after we take this break for your Cottage Country Weather. Welcome back to Food and Friends. I'm Larry McIntosh. I want to remind you that today's featured recipe of the day at peakmarket.com and in the Winnipeg Free Press is chunky potato wedges, chunky potato wedges, okay? This recipe sounds super easy and good. It has potatoes and there's certainly red potatoes available in your stores right now and a few other ingredients, but it takes about 40 minutes to cook. So it's quick and easy. Crunchy potato wedges is today's featured recipe of the day in the Winnipeg Free Press and at peakmarket.com. And both the Winnipeg Free Press and our website have a new recipe every day, seven days a week. So please check them out. I hope you've marked your calendar for Peak of the Market's 17th Annual Family Fun Day. It will be on Thursday, August 20th, so I hope you'll be there. So this is what's happening. There'll be a free potato pancake breakfast, a free lunch with pork in a bun, potato salad and cold slaw, free pony rides, petting zoo, popcorn, giant slide, bouncers and a lot more. There's gonna be tours of our distribution center, including our new potato and onion packaging area. And this new packaging area was just installed last fall and it costs us $4 million and it's, it's incredible, but it's got these two 14-foot high robots that pack the potatoes and it's really cool to watch. So you get a tour there as well. The important thing is everything is absolutely free with any donation to Variety, the children's charity of Manitoba. So whether you can afford a couple of dollars or $20, whatever you want to donate, there's free breakfast, free lunch, all absolutely free with any donation to Variety, the children's charity of Manitoba. So please mark your calendar. Our 17th Annual Family Fun Day is Thursday, August 20th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on the lawn at Peak of the Market, 1200 King Edward Street, which is just north of the Winnipeg Airport. My coworkers and I look forward to seeing you there. We'll be right back with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklyn and Weston and Chair of the Winnipeg Police Board after we take this break for your news, sports and weather. We'll be right back. Welcome back. I'm Larry McIntosh. I want to take a moment to thank you for listening to Food and Friends. I'm thrilled with the number of people who say they listen to the show and who have sent in guest ideas. I'm very proud to say we have never rerun a show and that every single week, Food and Friends is a brand new episode. And according to the ratings, more people listen to Food and Friends every Saturday morning from eight to nine than any other radio show in Manitoba. You've made Food and Friends number one in our time slot and I'm very grateful and want to thank you for listening and for your support. Should you have any comments or suggestions about our show, please feel free to email me anytime at larrymccintosh@peakmarket.com. We're back with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklands and Weston. So we were talking during the news, you're from a farm background.
Yes, yes, I am. Yep. I grew up, went to high school in Carmen, Manitoba.
Oh sure.
And I grew up west of Carmen, about 15 miles west. And this little, really, it's not even there anymore. It was just a store Larry, with a small store with mailboxes. And it was called Stevenfield. This is the provincial park near there, Stevenfield, Manitoba. But my parents are still out in that area, my parents and my sister and her husband and their family, out at Rose Isle, just, just out by Rose Isle.
And they had some weather problems though, a few weeks back, didn't they?
Yeah. And a few weeks back, they had a huge winds. I guess, I don't think it was a tornado. There was no report of tornado, but it was one of those big plow winds. And it came with a lot of hail. The hail was golf ball size or larger. And I know my parents' vehicles, they, they looked like golf balls. They really do. They're all, you know,
Oh really, eh?
Full of dents, you know, and a lot of damage to, to trees. And my parents have always been big gardeners. I mean, we had a farm, but we always had a big garden and that's what they still love to do is have a big garden. And unfortunately, the hail just kind of wiped out the garden. So the corn's gone and everything else is, is gone, but it, it was a significant weather event.
Dr. Tracy, who is our Director of Research and Quality Enhancement, lives in Carmen. So on the day it was happening, it was getting, she was texting me telling me it was, they lost their power. Now, they didn't get it quite as bad as just, that would be east of it, I guess. No, west of it.
Carmen would be west. Yes, Carmen would be east of it, yeah, Rose Isle's west.
Yeah, so, yeah, but I, it's devastating what Mother Nature can do. And it's very, this year it's been fairly isolated. It's been a field here, but not across the street. It's been kind of strange weather.
That's right. And it seemed that when you follow, that storm in particular, you know, my aunt is in Carmen and she's an insurance broker. And so I was talking to her about just, and she said it was just like a strip, but I don't quote, you know, me on this, but it was a few miles wide anyways. It just kind of went headed from where Rose Isle is, kind of southeast, you know, towards Miami area and then, and then on. And where you'd have no damage to a field and a crop half a mile over, you'd have almost everything, you know, complete devastation, just, just, just adjacent to it.
And we all can relate to weather issues in Manitoba, the Red River, the Assiniboine River, that we've had problems with that over the years. But it's just, it kind of amazes me when you step back, Calgary this week had those tunnel clouds there and hail. Some of our, we have a distribution center in Calgary as well, and they were showing us pictures of hail from their yards. And it is amazing what happens. So as part of being on the police board, do you, are you involved in, what does the police board do? Let me ask that question.
The Winnipeg Police Board is, is, the easiest way to say it is it's civilian governance. It's civilian oversight of the Winnipeg Police Service. The, the police board was established by provincial legislation a few years ago. The province has what's called the Police Services Act. And out of the Police Services Act, it, it deems that every jurisdiction that has a police, a local police force, so, you know, police service, like the Winnipeg Police Service or the Brandon, you know, police force, each has to have a civilian oversight governance board. And so that's what the Winnipeg Police Board is and was provincially mandated.
So is this something that, forgive me for not knowing, but is it, if there's a complaint that comes to you, is it more looking at how it operates or?
Yeah, not necessarily. The, the, there's a few things that the police, the police board is, is responsible to do. One is to work with the service to establish policies
Okay.
around the effective management of, of the police service. And what we do primarily is we work with the Chief of Police. It's really the Chief of Police that, that we, we work with and he's, he's responsible to us to, to bring reports, reports forward. And so to establish policies for the effective management of the police service, we also have a role in, in putting forward to City Council an estimate on the cost of policing each year, like an annual police budget. So we have, we certainly have a key role in, in that as well. And, and really what we do is we, in a, in a real large way, we represent the, the citizens so that the police in essence are no longer kind of self-governing. So that's really what's established. There's, there's other, there's two other entities that deal with complaints.
Okay.
Well, actually three, because if someone has a, let's say a complaint, they can contact the police itself and internally, the Winnipeg Police Service has a, a mechanism to deal with complaints. But then there's also two entities outside. One is the Law Enforcement Review Agency, LIRA. And then there's a brand new one that, that just came on stream in, in June, which is also a birth provincially called the Independent Investigations Unit. And they deal with the most serious incidents that involve police.
And in no way did I want to indicate that there's been a lot of complaints about our police department because I don't think, I'm not aware of it. I, I think they do a wonderful job. And certainly another job that I would find hard to do. They put their lives out there all the time for us. But there's always gonna be somebody that has something to say, right?
That's right. But I could echo what you, what you just said. And I think, I appreciate you, you mentioning that. We, we, just tell you quickly, we released with the, with the Winnipeg Police Service, the board and the service released a strategic plan this year. It's a, that maps out, you know, where we believe the police will go for the next few years. And with that, we've got, we had several public consultations. And at those public consultations, overwhelmingly right now, the citizens appreciate the Winnipeg Police.
We're speaking with Councilor Scott Gillingham. We'll be right back after this break. Welcome back. I'm Larry McIntosh. Food and Friends Radio is on TV. Each radio show is filmed and will be posted on mytoba.ca later today. So if you want to see the TV version of this or previous radio shows, please visit mytoba.ca. Thanks to 680 CGOB's Nicole, who produces our show, and Riley, who operates the camera, as well as the teachers of the Broadcasting and Media Arts Program at Tech Vok High School. You can also listen to an audio podcast of Food and Friends at soundcloud.com and at the iTunes Store. So please just do a search for Food and Friends with Larry at mytoba.ca or soundcloud.com or at the iTunes Store. And all the shows will come up for your listening or viewing pleasure. We're back with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklyn, Brooklands, Weston and the Chair of the Winnipeg Police Board. We were, we're talking off air about our city and our province and how you and I have met at many charity dinners. What, what is your thought? And I know you've been involved in a lot of volunteerism before you became a City Council. I've lived all over Canada. I just find Manitoba an amazing place for volunteerism and generosity. What's your thoughts?
I would echo that. I also have lived in, well, I've lived in a couple of other western provinces. And there is, there's something about Manitoba, something about Winnipeg, that the people are extremely special and, and the commitment to volunteer. The commitment to do, you know, to put in time, to put in energy, hours of time, you know, hours of energy for, for good causes. So whether it's serving as a volunteer on a local community club board, or whether it's serving as a volunteer on a seniors club board, or, you know, rotary clubs and, and Lions Clubs, whatever they are. And you mentioned it, the number of people serving as volunteers on these excellent charities that do great work on our community. It is just something really special and it's, it's part of what makes Manitoba unique. So whether it's in the city or in a, you know, a rural community, the volunteers, I've, I've said often, I really think they're the backbone of, of, of the communities.
There's, there's no question when people move to Winnipeg, and I used to be in a retail chain 20 years ago, 22 years ago, I guess now. And we used to bring managers in as we opened stores in Manitoba. And it was, it was hard to get people moving to Winnipeg because they, you know, they think of all the negative stuff that they hear. But when it was their time to take the next step in their career, they never wanted to leave Winnipeg because it was such an incredible place, because of the people, because of the volunteerism, because of the, the community aspect. It really is a special place. You must, you've, you've lived elsewhere. You must see that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And I think, now, I don't know the latest statistics, but as far as generosity
Yes.
of people, as far as they're giving to charities. I mean, Manitoba always ranks, you know, near, I believe, near the top in Canada, per capita. And so it's not just with, with time and energy, but people are opening their checkbooks, you know, and writing a check or going to those functions. Or quite frankly, organizations like yourself, at Peak of the Market, holding, holding dinners and, and the proceeds of those dinners going to whether it's, you know, whatever, whatever organization, you know? It's, it's something, it's something unique about, about Winontobaggers. You know, we have our sports teams we love to cheer for. And, you know, we, we pride ourselves in enduring cold winters and handling mosquitoes, but we're also great volunteers. So if I can just take an opportunity then to encourage all the people volunteering that are listening to this show. I've often told people, because I've, you know, been able to lead volunteer organizations, that what you do as a volunteer really does matter. Maybe no one, you think nobody sees it and maybe they don't. You see it, and sometimes you're staying up late to, you know, put whatever together for this volunteer, this organization you're volunteering, or putting another Saturday in. It, it does matter. It makes a difference. And so huge kudos to all the volunteers in our province.
Well said. So City Hall, you've been there eight months now. What's your proudest moment in the eight months that you've been there? Can you pick one?
Proudest moment? Well, one of the things that I, that I was, we were talking off air about this, one of the things that I was glad to do. When I was campaigning back, you know, before the election, I would go throughout the ward, St. James, Brooklands and Weston. And really the ward, this ward takes in three, it's one great community with three distinct communities within one. And the ward was named St. James, Brooklands. And I thought it was important to add the Weston, you know, to represent that community as well. And so I was really pleased when unanimously, my fellow councillors passed that motion that I brought forward to add, you know, add Weston to, to the name of the ward, so.
That's great. And what do you think the biggest challenge we have as a city in the coming years?
I think the biggest challenge we have, quite frankly, is, is, is financial, you know? We've got a lot of needs. I campaigned, as many others did, on, on infrastructure, on, you know, potholes and streets and the need to fix those. And we've been able this last year to put in, you know, I think it's $103 million, which is unprecedented, into infrastructure. But I think in the coming years, the biggest challenge will be, is and will be, you know, financial resources for the city of Winnipeg. So we can continue to, you know, provide the services and fix our roads and build what needs to be built new, yet do it in, in a way that is, that is not too burdensome to everybody.
Yeah, because all of us don't want to see increase in taxes and all of us don't want to see potholes in our roads and all of us don't. So it's hard to have everything. And, you know, I talk to people that I work with or I talk to other people at other groups, we're complaining about the constructions going on because traffic's bad. But on the other hand, we want the streets to be fixed. So, you know,
It's a double edged sword.
It's a double edged sword, right?
It really is. So I, I know this and I think everybody realizes, there's no quick fix.
Right.
There's just no, again, it sounds cliche, but there's no, there's no quick solution. So it's about, you know, making hopefully prudent decisions with, with a lot of forethought and looking long-term in the future and saying, okay, what do we need to do today as a City Council to set the city Winnipeg up for success in the, in the, in the future years? For future generations. And so that's really the approach that I'm trying to take and, and, you know, I know some of my other colleagues are trying to take as well.
And what I liked, what you just said there is you're looking at the future, right? Not just the next three or four or five years, next election cycle. You're talking about, you know, after you've retired or were gone and other things, about where the city's gonna be. And that to me says volumes. So I love that. Thank you. We're speaking with Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklyn and Weston, and we'll be right back after we take this break for your Cottage Country Weather Update. Welcome back to Food and Friends. Please join me next Saturday, August 1st at 8:00 AM with my guest, Big Daddy Taz. Taz is not only a very talented comedian, he also enlightens and inspires his audience. If you've never seen him, you're gonna enjoy hearing him. But if you ever get a chance to hear him in his comedy act, he's fantastic. He's also a very giving individual and whenever there's a charity needing help, he's there. My guest today has been Scott Gillingham, City Councilor for St. James, Brooklyn, Weston. This has been a lot of fun. I mean, the hours flown by and gotten to know you a little bit better.
Yeah, it has been a lot of fun. Again, Larry, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and to be with your audience. And, and I, again, appreciate the, the work that you, Peak of the Market, do in this community.
And thank you for what you're doing for our city. We appreciate it. And may not get thanked enough, but we're thanking you officially right now.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for being on. Thanks for being on Food and Friends and, uh, what you do for our community. As I said, take care, everybody. Please don't forget to eat your veggies and we'll talk to you next Saturday.